Did you guys call the meeting to order already? Okay, let's call the meeting to order, this time it's four with three.
Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Eliezar Juajardo.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Mayor Pro Temp Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a floor.
Thank you. Item one B, pledge allegiance and invocation by Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Dear God, thank you for your amazing power and work in our lives. Thank you for your goodness and for your blessings over us. Thank you that you are able to bring hope through even the toughest of times, strengthening us for your purposes. Thank you for your great love and care. Thank you for your mercy and grace. Thank you that you are always with us and will never leave us. Thank you for your incredible sacrifice that we might have freedom in life. As we look forward to the Thanksgiving holiday, we pray and thank you above all. Amen.
Thank you, Luis. Moving on, item two, proclamations, two A proclamation proclaiming Arbor Day. And I believe our urban foresters here.
Nice. Good afternoon, mayor commissioners, Senator on East Parks and Rec Director. Here with me is Lily Martinez, she's urban ecologist. So this is the fourth consecutive year we've done this proclamation for Arbor Day. So it's just something to kind of raise awareness to, I guess, the community that the city's attempt, continues to be good stewards with the environment and with trees and stuff like that. We did have a really cool event last Friday, November 5th. We gave out 100 trees there at the Pepe Salinas. We had a bunch of families come up and line up and pick up some one gallon trees. But I'll turn it over to Lily, she can give you all a little bit more information on that and a little bit more background.
Thank you, Harry.
Good afternoon, Lily Martinez, urban ecologist. So like Sergio mentioned, this is the fourth year that the city of FAR has pledged to be a tree city with the Arbor Day Foundation. And the Arbor Day Foundation just basically encourages the planting of trees for greener spaces, healthier environments, and wildlife-friendly neighborhoods. And so the city of FAR will continue to be environmental stewards and hope to encourage residents in other cities to follow a similar path. So to accomplish this, we did meet the four requirements set by the Arbor Day Foundation, and they consist of having a tree board, having a tree ordinance, spending $2 per capita on urban forestry, and celebrating our Arbor Day, which like Sergio mentioned as well, that was on November 5th. And with this, we hope to continue to move towards a greener and future. So that's pretty much what the proclamation states.
Great. What kind of trees did you guys give out?
We gave out five different types, and they were all natives, just because, you know, I want to encourage, you know, people to learn a little bit more about the environment that we live in, the habitat that we have. And so the five types were Anacua, Mexican Olive, Mexican Ash, Texas Ebony. And we did have a very interesting one, which everybody was looking for, which was the red mulberry. So that one sets fruit, and that's edible to us and wildlife.
Is it red because it's red or?
Uh, the fruit is red, red mulberry, yes.
I don't know anything about trees.
Yeah.
I usually run into them or something, but I don't.
Well, it's a great tree to have.
Is it?
Yes.
Good. She just show and tells, she's showing me what it is. All right. Whereas Arbor Day has been an occasion for recognizing the value of trees and woodlands to human welfare since 1872. Whereas the city of FAR recognizes the value of trees as they contribute to our environment by moderating temperatures, mitigating the effects of climate change, and reducing heating and cooling costs. And whereas the city of FAR has the tradition of supporting and encouraging the planting, care, and health of trees throughout the community. And with the trees in the city of FAR increase city property values, enhance the economic viability of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees provide clean air to breathe, prevents erosion of soil, and provides shelter, food, and protection to wildlife. Whereas all residents are in urge to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the town commission due here, I proclaim November 5th, 2021 as Arbor Day. In witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the city of FAR to be affixed on this 15th day of November 2021. Do people ever ask you for any type of exposure trees in particular, or they just take whatever you have that you're giving?
We did have a few that requested certain trees if they had looked at the flyer. It was kind of in tiny font, which ones they wanted.
What do they ask you for?
They asked a lot for the red mulberry. And that was pretty much it, just the red mulberry that we got asked for.
They don't ask for, what is it, flamboyant or the?
Yeah, no, it states on there like that they're natives and stuff. So I try not to get, it's not native to the area, so. I decided to include it.
Well, I'm still gonna buy what I want. Native or not.
It's still a tree.
Thank you, congratulations on the proclamation.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to item three, public testimony, has anybody signed up? None. Item number four, public carers, has anybody signed up? None, thank you. Moving on to item five, city manager's report, yes, mayor commissioner, I have a couple of things for y'all today. One submission of sales tax report, again, another healthy month. 21.96% increase to growth year-to-date. And this time, this same time last year, we're up 24.85%. Those sales tax are very healthy. Next thing I have, there is, our library director is here, and there's a very special young man he wants to announce. And I don't want to steal his thunder, so bring it up.
Is that for you?
No, man, not for me, but I'm always prepared.
Yes, sir.
Well, today we, my name is Alfredo C., I'm your library director for the city of FAR. Today, I present to you Kadir Alarcón. He was the winner of the children's spooky monster story contest. He's not just any kid, he currently attends Vanguard kindergarten school. And the reason I was amazed and, you know, is because he's only kindergarten, and he wrote like a short story, but to us, it was quite amazing that we could able to, were able to produce it as a published book. I mean, I think it merits that, because I've never seen, I mean, I couldn't even write my name when I was in kindergarten, much less write a short story. So I think, you know, Kadir is, you know, has a long way to go. We do produce great doctors, great businessmen, great teachers, great elected officials. I think he's, he's gonna be the next writer, the next great writer coming in from the city of FAR, from the likes of J.K. Rowling, Stephen King, because it is kind of a scary story, James Patterson. So I think he has a long, long way to go, but I think it merits that we recognize his accomplishment, even though he's a kindergartner, and also recognize his parents for bringing him over and bringing him to the library programs as well. So before you, I have Mr. Alarcón, he just wants to say a few words, and also we'll close it out with Kadir, the few words. And before you, also, I have a copy of the book, published by the library. Each one of you gets a copy of it, signed by Kadir. Or not mine, but yeah, signed by Kadir, so you're welcome to have it. If you want a special dedication, maybe you can write you one as well. But I'll bring his dad.
Yeah, just for the record, since you brought it up, you mean, I know that PHA is the school district that produces the most physicians, the most doctors in the valley, just for the record, PHA.
It's true, I mean, you're right about that, so PHA has a lot of gifted and talented kids that come out of there.
Hola, buenas tardes.
Hola, buenas tardes, bienvenidos, felicidades.
Muchas gracias, mayor, commissionedos, y todas las autoridades que están aquí. Agradezco primero que nada como papá.
Sí, no me imagino.
El reconocimiento que han tenido para el trabajo de un pequeño niño que hizo un pequeño libro de una pequeña historia a sus cinco años. Eso para nosotros es muy importante, pero sobre todo, yo quería externarles y comunicarles lo importante que es el trabajo que ustedes y la biblioteca de la ciudad hace. Es, ustedes son ese eslabón entre nuestros gobernantes y nuestros hijos. La biblioteca cumple esa función tan importante de todos los días hacer algo más que prestar libros a nuestras familias. La biblioteca de nuestra ciudad de FAR, como le dice mi hijo, nuestra biblioteca es una biblioteca de la cual nos sentimos orgullosos. No es quizá la más grande, pero es una gran biblioteca que tiene un gran servicio con grandes personas que ayudan a nuestros hijos y a nuestras familias. Nuestra biblioteca es una biblioteca de clase mundial, esa es la verdad. Las personas que allí laboran lo hacen con vocación, con ética, con corazón, y con ganas de servir a nuestra comunidad. Y eso para mí como papá me hace sentirme orgulloso porque vivo en una ciudad donde a las autoridades y a las instituciones les importan mis hijos, la cultura, la educación, y la comunicación entre ustedes y nuestras familias. Quería yo aprovechar este momento para decir que me siento contento, me siento feliz de ser una partecita de ese equipo que ustedes han formado y que mi hijo es, no es hijo nada más de mi esposa y mío. Mi hijo es hijo de la ciudad, de la biblioteca, y se siente contento de participar y de contribuir un poquito en lo que ustedes hacen. Los exhorto y los animo a que sigan así, a que no se cansen por más pandemias que haya, y que sigan haciendo su trabajo pensando en lo más importante que son nuestras familias. Le agradezco mucho, mi hijo quiere decirles algo si se lo permiten muy breve.
Claro.
Good afternoon, my name is Kadir Alarcón. Cuando sea grande quiero ser autor de libros y por mi trabajo servirle a la comunidad igual que ustedes, gracias.
Qué bonito el libro, qué bonito, le está viendo la historia. Me sustante es un momento, porque empezás aquí a decir que ibas a correr para el alcalde, dije ya me apurases. Pero está bien bonito, mi hijo, debe estar muy grueso tu papá.
Gracias.
They're very proud of you. Muy pocos niños pueden hacer esto, yo tengo algo que ver, yo no podía escribir como estás en esta edad, ni me comparo, son felicidades a ti, sigue realizando las ganas, mi hijo, para adelante, okay?
Gracias.
Nos permites una foto contigo y con tus papás? Sí, te pasa para acá, per frente.
The play, you're gonna make a play?
I want to say, to the greatest mayor ever. Thank you, congratulations.
Yes, felicidades. Vamos a guardar porque yo sé que va a ser famoso, so yo tenga la primer copia.
Thanks again, mayor.
Thank you, sir, good job.
Good work, library. Yes, mayor commissioners, I have a couple more reports for y'all, if y'all will indulge me. One, I think as everybody knows, we finally did reach agreement with PSJA. So now the tournament's up and running, not up and running, but almost up and running, but we're moving forward. I think there's a short video they want to show.
A state-of-the-art swimming facility is coming to the city of FAR. The natatorium located on Sioux Road and Frontage is nearly complete. It's the end result of a collaboration between the city of FAR and the PSJA School District, two years in the making.
There is a big interest in the community for aquatic sports. Every community seems to have a small inadequate facility, and we really need to have something that's unique, that everybody in the Rio Grande Valley can use.
Dr. Hernandez adds, "It's a forward-looking project to meet the region's growing demand and need for sports diversity."
But here specifically, the residents of FAR and the PHA students can have a state-of-the-art Olympic-sized natatorium, climate-controlled, where they can practice, compete, and showcase their students.
A $26 million project, PSJA collaborating with a $12.25 million check approved by the school board October 25th, 2021.
All funding comes from our general revenues. As you know, we collect utility funds, trash, taxes. So we generate quite a bit of revenue even from the bridge. So without raising taxes, because we are like you at home, we mind our business, we mind our pennies, we count our pennies, we're very good at budgeting, and we've been able to set aside funds over the years for this project.
This natatorium is a second aquatics project in collaboration with the PSJA School District, the FAR Aquatics Center being the first.
This is just a natural way of continuing that program to make it grow. This is a very competitive pool, also has diving, and we're also looking to attract others throughout the state so that when they come out here and compete, we don't have to travel too far. We can have others travel here to the city of FAR.
The city of FAR promotes excellence, and this state-of-the-art facility will help students put in their best training so they can reach their full potential all while doing it right here at home. Other community members will enjoy the benefits as well.
Hopefully, also with the future University of Texas Rio Grande Valley is also in conversation with us so that they may be able to also be able to utilize this facility as well.
PSJA Superintendent Dr. Arredondo says, "Strong collaborations result in great opportunities for valley students."
Well, I think it's important that we all understand that this has been a long endeavor, but it's a well-worthed endeavor, that we want to continue to invest in our community. We want to continue to invest in our students.
We are being looked at, and not only for the natatorium, but what we do with our bridge, what we do with our broadband, what we do with the infrastructure, giving money back to our residents, our citizens. All that's being looked at because it's novel, it's never been done, and it is something that people are raising their eyebrows trying to figure out how we did it and how it benefits everyone without raising taxes. So it's actually, it's actually exciting.
Completion is expected December 2021.
Very nice, sir, very nice. And for the public, this wouldn't have been possible without our great staff, right? Starting with Wiley and Carla, our finance director and the city manager, and all the staff that have been working on this, and they're really, that's what it is, the last two years. And for clarification, UTRGV has already announced, once they passed the referendum that, and if you look at the press release, they stipulate clearly the FAR natatorium is where their aquatics program will be located and housed completely. So we know that's coming already. We're just finalizing some documentation that we need, so it is truly a three-way partnership, and it's unique. You're not going to find anything like it anywhere in the state, to be frank, because you're not going to find a city, a school district, and a university collaborating together for the betterment of the community. And again, it's, when it's said and done in December, everybody's going to be welcome to use it. Take the tour, of course, and we're going to be promoting it valley-wide because we know there's a lot of UYL, not collegiate level, up in the high school level, competition, and everybody's been calling about it already, trying to sign up, but be patient, it's almost there. The furniture should be ordered when?
It's already been ordered.
Okay, furniture's ordered, that's good. So then, it's exciting times for the city of FAR from many fronts, and it could not have happened without our wonderful staff, so congratulations to all of you staff.
Thank you, mayor, appreciate it. The next one is, and I don't want to give it up, so I'm gonna try to preface this as best I can. You know, the mayor had a vision back in 2015, 16, 17, somewhere along there. It's kind of hard to keep track of all the visions he has, but this particular one was to combine our public safety communications, our fire, police, and EMS into one, into one area, and to have a seamless transition between the three departments and receiving a call and dispatching services to the public. So Kenneth, can you come up? So, you know, in that vision, we made it happen. Staff put everything together, it started with Danny as a director, now Kenneth is a new director, but it's come to fruition, and this are the rewards of those efforts.
Kenneth, Dennis, Public Safety Communications Director for the record. Good afternoon, mayor, city commission. I just want to read real quick a note that I made for the specific event. On Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, around 8:15 a.m., telecommunications officer Dora Medina received a frantic 911 call from a soon-to-be father. He urgently asked for assistance in getting an ambulance for his wife. TCO Medina, being a certified emergency medical dispatcher, quickly jumped in action and began the call-taking process that ultimately led to having the, ultimately led to having to provide instructions over the phone to aid in the delivery of the child. TCO Medina continued to provide instructions when at last everyone heard the cries of a newborn child. It goes without having to say, say that the calm and quick actions of TCO Medina helped in the successful and healthy delivery of Damian Vargas, a very handsome little boy.
Wow, congratulations.
And that's him right there. So this is TCO Dora Medina.
Oh, it's you. Hi, welcome.
She's one of our TCOs, she works on the medical side. And what I wanted to present to her was her first stork, has a little blue, blue baby here for a boy. So this is for you. So anytime that we actually have someone successfully deliver a baby via the phone, we give them a blue stork or a pink stork, depending on the gender, as well as pins for cardiac saves, if they provide CPR over the phone, and we actually save the individual. But this particular situation, we were able to deliver the baby before EMS arrived, and then of course EMS arrived, on scene took over, and awesome care all the way to the hospital.
Hey, man, she's your competition, that's correct. No, congratulations. You know, our comp center, EMS, and fire, it's all by design, right? Currently, I would argue that we have, we have the best system, and it's, as you know, we have, you may not know it, but we're going to be going to Austin and San Antonio to meet with the leadership in Texas, right? What we envision is quite different than we have anywhere in the state of Texas. Ours is, we'll be comprehensive. There will be a day in the Rio Grande Valley where somebody calls in, speaks to the young lady, and the comp center will be able to dispatch the 911, whomever ambulance may be, it could be private or public, makes no difference, to the appropriate facility for the appropriate care at the right time, where the patients, irrespective of politics or economics, are sent to the right place so they can see their doctor, taken care of, and not wait in the ER for hours and get the care they need, which is currently lacking in the Rio Grande Valley and other parts of the state. And that's why we're being summoned up to Austin, quite frankly, in San Antonio, so we can share those thoughts with the Texas leadership, because I think it is a better model, because we need to do as best for the patients, just like what you did. Irrespective of where you may live, you should get the best care in the United States that you deserve without any political or economics being involved with it. That's, that's healthcare. And so we're working on it, and this is the stepping stones to get there. So you guys are building a foundation, and by your acts, you're absolutely giving credibility to the city of FAR and the state level of what's happening. So congratulations, I know you didn't do it because of that, you're passionate for your job, and know that you're making a difference in the Rio Grande Valley already. Okay, can we get a picture with her, is that okay?
Want to say anything?
Yeah, please.
Hold up, she was a little shy.
Well, I just want to give thanks to my director for giving me the opportunity to work for the city of FAR and my team for supporting me.
Great, great job.
Congratulations, well deserved. Okay, I got one more. Great things in the city of FAR. Now that we're talking about babies and EMS, there was an EMS call that we want to recognize, Danny's coming up. You know, our EMS baby is only five months old, right? Six months old, so half a year. But we are doing great things, we hired great medics, and great things will continue to happen. Danny?
Good afternoon, for the record, Daniel DeMitas, EMS chief for the city of FAR. So on October 15th, we received a call at our Public Safety Communications Center for a medical emergency. And two, two of the staff are here, the other person unfortunately is on the, on an emergency right now. But we have a video we want to show real quick, and then we'll continue.
Said he couldn't talk, and he's busy, and he can't call for help right now.
It's a life-saving skill set. FAR EMS, highly trained to listen, identify an emergency, and dispatch. But every call is a race against time.
In the city of FAR, we respond to over 800 calls for service a month. That's 911 calls where people call and asking for an ambulance.
Daniel Ramirez, city of FAR EMS chief, referring to a recent EMS call that was handled with the highest of expectations, care, and speed.
Can you give me a number to ambulance or welfare check sheet?
Let me, let me touch it with the ambulance, don't hang up, hold on.
That call quickly identified as a desperate call for help from a patient suffering a stroke, and a team that knew exactly how to respond.
Upon arrival, they had already made patient contact and recognized the patient was suffering from a stroke within approximately a minute and a half.
It's, it's all about recognition with our training that we do here at headquarters. We go out there, we recognize what we are, with our training, and we act on it.
The 57-year-old male FAR resident now home recovering.
They say minutes matter, yes, they do, with the, that goes with brain tissue, with heart tissue, and those are the main important ones, get him fast to the hospital.
In this case, if the patient would have waited a very long time to come into the hospital, the brain would have started dying, because each vessel, the longer you wait, that's why we say time is brain, the longer you wait, the vessels start dying in the brain. And in this case, 911 was initiated for the patient, and the facility or EMS, the FAR EMS, brought the patient in timely so that we can treat the patient timely. And the patient was able to essentially walk out of our facility and go home.
A FAR family now thankful for the outcome. Their loved one's life saved. But for FAR EMS, this is more than just a training and career.
It doesn't happen all the time or often, but when it does, like today, like when that gentleman got to go home and has a second chance to do his work and continue his life, I mean, that makes me feel really, really good. That what we're doing, our job, is actually working.
Often times, when the guys respond to calls, they transport the patients to the hospitals and they don't know what happens afterwards, right? And so in an effort to close that loop, so that the guys know that the patient care that they did provide did have a good patient outcome, we want to make sure that, that we recognize when that happens.
Mr. Brighido Montemayor, a little camera shy, sending a message too.
Yeah, they, they, I mean, I mean, it's wonderful, I'm, I'm very, I'm, uh, I'm very fortunate to have them around when this happened, you know, I'm very lucky, I'm, I'm happy.
I'm proud of the, the moment, because it's, and it's, it's not going to be the last time, there's going to be a lot more, because our guys continue to run those calls and continue to recognize whether it's a stroke or a cardiac arrest or a severe trauma patient. And so, you know, I'm super excited and I, and I have been in contact with the family. Uh, they're super excited that we're going to do this recognition.
And although the Montemayor family couldn't be here today at City Commissioners Meeting, they add they are forever thankful.
We are Team FAR.
Um, so like I said, with me today are two of our team members. And also we have the team from South Texas Health System, which is where the patient was transported. And so, I don't know all the names, uh, you want to introduce all your team?
Why don't you, can you come to the mic, the public is watching that way they, they recognize it, right?
My name is Alejandra Yala, I am the Stroke Program Manager at South Texas Health Systems McAllen.
Okay.
And we have here Dr. Khan, he is our Emergency Department Medical Director at South Texas Health Systems McAllen. We have Dr. Alexandro Sorgiades, uh, neuroendovascular physician for our stroke patients. And then, uh, or Linda Avantao, she's our nurse practitioner for the neuroendovascular program as well.
Very nice. Doc, can you step to the mic real quick? So for the public's, uh, sake, can you tell them what you do and your, and your, and your duty at, uh, South Texas, South Texas Health System? What exactly is this, what does it mean when a patient arrives to your door? What do you do?
Sure, uh, my name is Dr. Khan, I'm the ER Medical Director over at South Texas Health System, I look over McAllen Heart Hospital and, uh, McAllen Medical Center. Uh, their emergency services. So we basically, uh, taking all the patients that are brought in by fresh responders and, uh, provide the initial, uh, stabilization for the patients. And then from there, patients move on to seeing the specialist or, uh, discharge home to follow up with their primary care physicians.
Wonderful, if you ever have a problem with FAR EMS, let us know right away. We want to know. Okay.
Well, uh, all I can say is the FAR EMS has been an incredible, uh, part of the community. And, uh, we are very lucky to have them and, uh, so all the paramedics are very, uh, experienced, competent and, uh, uh, great team players, so thanks.
Thank you, Doc. Doc, you want to introduce yourself and let the public know what you do? Because those are big words and not everybody speaks our crazy language.
Yeah, no, sure, Alex Sorgiades is my name. We, uh, I'm part of the endovascular team, so we, um, offer, um, select stroke patients, uh, procedures that can reopen the blood vessels and, uh, so prevent the stroke from getting larger. So essentially, we try to minimize the effects of stroke.
So time is of, uh, uh, importance to you?
Uh, yes, 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 of course, yeah. And that's why, you know, this case was so important, because they, everything happened in a timely fashion and the patient had a great outcome, so.
That's, that's great.
Yeah.
This young lady is going to be? Okay, you want to stop and say hi?
Hello, everyone, um, my name is Sir Linda, I'm a nurse practitioner. I've done, um, stroke care for many, many years. And the opportunity to help Mr. Montemayor in recovery of a stroke was very, um, encouraging for me as I do my job, because this is what I want to see every day. And, uh, we continue to do outreach to, um, FAR EMS to educate them how to take care of this group of patients, so they can identify them quickly and get them to the hospital right away. So they won't end up with severe disability. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Your passion shows through her voice, huh?
And so, um, we continue to work with all the hospital systems and, and we work together. Dr. Khan has my number, will send messages when we have any issues and when they do a good job. And so it's important for us to recognize all of our staff do a good job. But when we have good patient outcomes, I think it's very important that we recognize that, especially when we made a difference where somebody's gets to go home. And, um, uh, when we have a critical call like a stroke or a car, cardiac arrest, and they actually get to go home, I think that's important that we recognize the good job that our staff does. And so we have some outstanding performance awards that we want to present to Andrew Casayano, he's the cap, shift captain. And it says on October fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one, EMT Paramedic Casayano successfully recognized, treated, and transported a stroke alert, resulting in excellent patient outcome. Andrew?
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just want to thank, um, City Commission and the citizens of FAR for their votes of confidence in EMS and in Chief Ramidis for the ongoing efforts of training. Every month, we do have a mandatory training, whether it be trauma care, triage, stroke recognition, all that pays off in the field. I've had the opportunity to, uh, work not only in the valley, but in Bear County, Live Oak County, where they have differing levels of, um, protocol and practicum for patient care. And I have high hopes for the City of FAR EMS and our future patients, that we're going to be the, cut, on the cutting edge for, uh, pre-hospital care. Thank you all.
Thank you. And congratulations.
It was also shift captain Ryan Ziggert.
Ziggert, I can never say his name.
Swagger, there you go. And again, same thing, on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, EMT Paramedic Swagger successfully recognized, treated, and transported a stroke patient, resulting in excellent patient outcome.
I just want to say thank you very much. Um, I've worked Oklahoma City, I've flown, uh, Houston, I've flown in some other places. And this is an incredible system that, uh, you guys have helped us build, uh, getting Chief Ramirez and every, all our admin in place. You guys know as well as anybody else that if you don't have the right people in the right place, nothing's going to go anywhere and, and this thing has got traction. Um, I would rival it with Oklahoma City at this point. Uh, they're doing, they've been around a little bit longer, so they got a few more things, but I'm telling you, you guys have got an incredible system. And, uh, I thank you for the opportunity to work here. My Spanish is coming along, I promise. But, uh, other than that, I just want to thank you for the opportunity, you guys are awesome, so just thank you.
Thank you.
And the last one is Denora Mendoza, she, you saw her on the video, but she's actually on a truck right now running an emergency call. So she couldn't make it. So the last one's for Denora and I have it for her.
What's her phone name?
Denora Mendoza.
Got it, all right. So Danny, uh, you, you're taking this, I mean, leaps and bounds, it's just tremendous what it's grown. For the record, we started this idea, right, before the pandemic, when you were going to do it regardless, but then when the federal funds came through and other opportunities, we jumped on it and we've accelerated it. And it's been nothing but a sheer success. Uh, we've had, as you know, multiple health systems call us, we don't even market, for God's sakes, and there's, they're, they're, they're calling, right? That's, that's a reflection of your leadership and your team. Uh, we're glad that you guys responded to that gentleman with the stroke in the City of FAR, but as a human being, I'm glad that you're here, uh, as a system in the Rio Grande Valley to help all of us. Because sooner or later, whether we like it or not, we're going to wind up at your doorstep. So it is incumbent on us and it, for selfish reasons, we want to be sure that we have the right people in the right place, certified at all times, we will gladly work with the private sector. But at the end of the day, when the private sector doesn't do what it's supposed to, we will step in. We're not stopping, it's only going to grow, it's only going to get more aggressive, because that's what the public deserves. And we're here to partner with, uh, South Texas Health System and any other health system that wishes to do what's best for the patient, because that's our underlying goal, do what's best for the patient. And our families are reaping the rewards, as we're seeing already. And so I'm ecstatic that it's, it's grown, but not only that, that we're being recognized on a multiple levels, as you know, Danny, that's where we're going to, uh, up north, right, to visit. And, um, it's only going to get better and, uh, every, every family's going to benefit from it. I don't know if Dr. Correto, you want to say anything about this topic?
No, again, I, I want to thank UHS for being here. I mean, it's, it's, it really signifies a lot that our program is, um, you know, it has worked with such a great system that is here in the valley for many, many years. And, uh, number two, you know, um, the program that people have to realize, what are we, five months? Six months? And, you know, um, there's a lot of issues initially, uh, but it's incredible what Danny and his team and, uh, administration has been able to, to accomplish. The captain from Oklahoma stated incredibly well, you know, it takes people to create a system and takes leadership and the people behind, you know, that want to learn and, and train and, and help the community. I see nothing but great things for this EMS, uh, service. Uh, I really thank the collaboration between the doctors, the ER, and the EMS. And you can understand these, the training that these gentlemen and ladies acquire is incredible, because you got to, you saw a baby being delivered and you had a stroke patient. So, you know, the fund of knowledge that they have to have in order to do the job that they do is incredible. It's not an easy thing. Uh, there's a lot of emotion, there's a lot of stress, there's a lot of heartache. And physically and emotionally, it takes a lot to be an EMS, you know, provider.
Yeah.
And, uh, so congratulations, you know, you have a lot of support from the commission, from us individually. And the more you do, the better it is, not only for FAR, but for the whole, you know, Idago County as well, so congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the accolades, uh, but I have to say that our EMT basics, our EMT advanced, our EMT paramedics, our shift captains, our deputy chiefs are the ones that are daily making sure that this thing runs well, right? And so without a good team, you know, our system is nowhere. And so those are the guys that are out there every day, taking care of people and making sure that we're doing things right.
Uh, the other thing is Dr. Solis from STC, the president, he wanted to be sure that, uh, he had heard something about this and wanted to, number one, congratulate everybody, but second of all, they want to accelerate the partnership with City of FAR for more, uh, of the type of employees that you need to get it done. So we, we'll be expanding the south, our campus with them in that effort, okay? I don't, I know you guys are super busy, but would you mind, uh, taking a photo with the City Commission? You guys can come up here and face, space south?
Thank you, congratulations, everybody, very, very good job. Uh, I only have about ten more announcements. I'm joking. I got one more, one more, we're done with city manager reports. Um, this is our last meeting for November, so our first meeting will be in December, but this new project will be kicked off before then, uh, starting the Monday after Thanksgiving, we're going to announce a Christmas door decorating contest for our citizens. Uh, we're going to give a grand prize of, I don't know how much yet, will be determined. Uh, the rules are going out shortly, probably by the end of this week or beginning of next week, but, uh, we want the public to know, want the public hopefully participate, uh, decorate your front door in a Christmas fashion, uh, we'll go judge it.
What are you going to do with, uh, there's some, um, homeowner association, they don't allow you to decorate.
Yeah, we're variants.
Okay. Right?
Grinchville.
Yeah.
For the record, Bobby Carrillo.
That's all I have, Mayor Commissioners. Onto consent agenda, all items are routine and uncontroversial and can be enacted on motion, so you so choose.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If passes.
This time I recommend going to executive session, Mayor.
In accordance with section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one to five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven of the Texas Government Code, a forward board commissioner here by gives notice it is commending to executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being four fifty. Time five-twenty-one, we're back in open session.
All right, thank you, I know everybody wants to get out of here quick, I'll go as fast as I can. Seven A, consideration action, defending a resolution for the cast of votes for candidates to Isaw County Presidential Board Directors for twenty twenty-two, that's twenty twenty-three. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, a couple of months ago, y'all made the nomination
Yeah.
in a resolution that was for, um, Albert Carandanas, these are for the votes.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if passes, thank you.
Thank you, seven B, consideration action, defending a resolution, appointed and reappointed four regular members of plan zoning commission. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, the four members, current members, Fomel Robles, Andy Castro, Rafael Mungia, and Charlie Ramidis wish to be reappointed, I was recommending.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If passes, thank you.
Thank you, uh, seven C, consideration action, defending a resolution, appointed and reappointed two regular members of the Board of Adjustments. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, um, the Board of Adjustments requires two plan zoning commissioners to be on the board. These two members are Danny Wiley and Rafael Mungia, and they wish to be reappointed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if passes, thank you.
Thank you, eight A, consideration action, defending author and city manager to negotiate an interim agreement for project construction management services for the administrative fire station slash EMS headquarters project. Yes, we've already engaged the attorney and we are planning it right now, so the best time to get construction manager on is early in the process, I was recommending. We should approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, if passes, thank you.
Thank you, eight B, consideration action, defending author and city manager to negotiate an interim to a contract for project slash construction management services for the golf course. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, same, uh, same theory, want to get them on early and we are planning to engage, uh, an architect next week.
Over approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if passes.
Thank you, eight C, consideration action, defending author and city manager to negotiate an interim to a contract for project construction management services for the south side stormwater retention pond and dog park, same theory, want to get them on early, the design is almost done.
When, what's the timeline for this?
Right now, we're just, uh, waiting on the environmental clearance, we've submitted all the documents. So we haven't gotten any feedback from Texas Water Development Board.
Oh.
They kind of gave us a muscle menos, like by the end of December, they would have final.
Once you get approval, what's the timeline for completion, like construction on that?
Oh, uh, the actual construction time, uh, six to eight months of actual construction.
But you need to keep in mind hurricane season.
Yes, yeah, it starts in June.
You got, you have to, your goal should be to finish it before it starts.
Definitely, yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Opposed? If passes.
Thank you, nine A, consideration action, defending author and city manager to purchase last mile material for the citywide fiber project phase three through phase five from Graybar Inc. for the citywide fiber project phase three through phase five from Graybar Inc. out of Fort Worth, Texas, through Omnia Cooperative Contract EV two three seven zero in the amount not to exceed one million eight hundred fifty six thousand four hundred seventy six dollars and thirty two cents.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Nine B, consideration action, defending authority, city manager to purchase fiber optic data center and home equipment for the citywide fiber project from Calix Inc. to a sole source proposal in the amount not to exceed four million six hundred seventy three thousand four hundred eighty two dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Who, what's Calix?
Calix is the brand, correct? Where's Jose?
Oh, there you are. Oh, sorry. Who's Calix is, where, where are they from?
We call it support, it was not working.
Wordwork. Yeah.
Calix is the, the fiber equipment manufacturer. It'll be the brand of the routers and the fiber equipment inside the home. Also, the, the brand of the equipment and the data center. They're the high-end, top-of-the-line equipment. And we selected this vendor because it'll be a single point of contact that can address any technical need. And I believe they're out of Richardson, Texas.
Richardson, Texas?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
I have a question there.
Yes, sir.
How come it, we only had one bidder for this? There's nobody else that does this?
Yes, sure. There was actually two companies, and then we didn't take out bids. We went through the state bid process and were already prebid. And there was two companies that I was dealing with. And like I said, this is a single source vendor, so anything we buy from them, they troubleshoot all of it, whether it's the home equipment, the mobile app, or the, all the equipment inside. On the other bidder, there was, he was supplying it, but several bidders were underneath him. So they were going to end up, at the end, they pointed fingers of who.
Yes.
Who was the problem.
Got it. Okay. Any discussion? Any additional discussion? No? All who was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nine C, consideration action, defending authority, city manager to purchase sound system for the FAR auditorium from Telepro Communications out of Mission, Texas, through TIPS contract, cooperative contract number two hundred one oh five in the amount not to exceed one hundred sixty eight thousand three hundred six dollars and eight cents.
Question for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Contracts and agreements. Ten A, consideration action, if any, unauthorized city manager to enter into an agreement with Pyro Shows of Texas for the New Year's Eve fireworks to play, display on December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is our first year we're doing a ball drop for New Year's. We're looking at doing some fireworks on top of City Hall. They're cold fireworks. So they'll go approximately a hundred feet in the air. Staffs recommend approval.
Vote for approval.
Second. What's cold?
They're, where's Jacob? Jacob, definition of cold fireworks?
They're not hot.
Safe.
It didn't burn.
I think these are guaranteed to burn out before they hit the ground. Yeah, but you can't, you can't get them that high. You can't do the six or eight hundred foot ones at cold. They gotta be the.
Some from a, people seeing from the south and north side, are they going to be to see it?
Yeah, this was designed just for the celebration we're having downtown, on New Year, New Year's Eve.
Okay.
Yeah, we want them to come over here too.
You love me?
He's sharp today.
Yeah. I'll be the cap.
Okay. Any, any additional discussion? All who's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
All right. Ten B, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to award supply contract for the purchase of RCB pipe manholes and inlets for Public Works Department and Core and Main to Core Main out of Enberg, Texas. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, on this one, I'd rather take no action on it.
Okay.
We want to come back and see if we need to rebid it or not.
You don't want a table? Just kind of no action?
Well, we can table it. I have to bring it back. Either way, we're going to bring it back. Or, so our recommendation has changed since we did the agenda last week, so we're actually going to recommend to rebid it. So I'd rather change and just do a denial.
See, no action.
We'll rebid it.
Okay. Because we have to retable. Okay.
Yeah, deny it. We can rebid it.
Vote for deny. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Deny.
Thank you. Ten C, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with GDJ Engineering from the pool of qualified firms for development and design of Moore Road from Jackson to Veterans Boulevard.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is from our pool of qualified engineers. Staffs recommend approval.
Vote.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Ten D, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to, authorized city manager to enter into a lease agreement for two ambulances with the city of Brownsville. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, city of Brownsville has two ambulances that are down, their frontline ambulances. Due to the supply chain, their parts are not coming in for approximately one or two months. I know we are later on the agenda entering to more contracts for ambulances. So we agreed to lease them out to the city of Brownsville, but we do have a clawback provision. If we need them for our, for our use, then we can get them back.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten E, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with South Texas Health System for Ground Ambulances, Road Wing, and Fixed Wing Transportation Services. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is the transport contract for our EMS division or department. We are going to be providing them five ambulances.
Okay.
We should approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Do we have a second on that?
Yeah, there was two people. It was.
Two motion, I'll second it.
He wants to second it, motion, he's saying.
I just heard a motion from both of them, that's why.
Did you get that? You did, right? Maybe I was a little slow today. That's okay.
Somebody has a cap.
Ten F, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with NAP Medical Center for Ground Ambulance, Road Wing, and Fixed Wing Transportation Services. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, similar to the previous agenda item, this is for NAP Medical Center. We are providing them one ambulance.
Vote move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
That's right. No, that's right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Ten G, consideration consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with Mission Regional Medical Center for Ground Ambulance, Road Wing, and Fixed Wing Transportation Services. Same as the previous two, we are providing the one ambulance also.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Ten H, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to amend contract with Doctor's Hospital at Renaissance for Ground Road Wing and Fixed Wing Transportation Services. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, we do have a current contract with the HR. They're the first ones to come on board for transportation. There is a stipulation in there about Medicare and Medicaid being paid, so we had to fix that. Staffs recommend approval.
Vote move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Ten I, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to negotiate into a contract with Elite Medical Air Transport LLC for Fixed Wing Transportation Services. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, we are currently using Mercuri Air Base or Air. They have two, they have two planes. The planes have not been reliable to use, so we missed about fifteen calls. This company, we met with them, they have, they're out of El Paso, Texas, and they're going to dedicate two airplanes for twenty-four seven use for us. So we recommend approval.
Vote move. Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, my calendar.
Any further discussion? All who's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ten J, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with STX Underground LLC from Brownsville, Texas, for the labor of the fiber optic network, South Build Phase Three project in the amount of eleven million eight hundred seventy two thousand seven hundred ninety six dollars and ninety eight cents through their local purchasing system, TIPS, purchasing contract number two hundred two oh one dash thirty one dash thirty two. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, we did engage this current company. They are contractor right now for the spine, which is the main one going down Jackson. This is going to get us into the submises and add to the house. It's additional work.
Vote move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Ten K, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to can continue maintenance and support services with Frontenna Consulting out of McAllen, Texas, for the South Far Pilot Wi-Fi Project on a month-to-month basis until house holds can be covered by Team FAR Services. We're excited for month-to-month till we can get there, Mayor Commissioners.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Ten L, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to award the service contract for direct internet access services to SmartCom Telephone LLC for the communications building. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is ISP Services to get our services out. Staffs recommend approval.
Vote move. Second.
Can I, do a second?
I have a question.
Wait, do we have a second? Would you have, I was going to hear, I have your problem right now. So.
I, I, I had a question about why we're doing five years? Is that because we got a better discount? Or is that the requirement that they do five years? Is that their reason for five years?
No, it shouldn't be. It's not a five-year contract, is it, Jose?
It's a five-year agreement.
Yes, it's a five-year agreement. We, Ignacio can clarify, but it's got annual renewals based on performance. So.
It is really annual, up to five years?
Up to.
Yes. We're not locked in five years that we have to stay with them. That's what he's asking you.
Correct.
Correct.
Is that the case?
Inacio Masqua, Porche Director. Yes, sir, we, we weren't in the renewal in annual basis.
yearly?
Yes.
Okay, so if after year one, we don't like it, we can get out?
Yes.
No penalties?
I need to go back and check the contract, but it shouldn't be any penalty. We want it on an annual basis with any other standard contract that we have.
Oh, sure.
Service contract, there should be no penalties on it.
Yes.
Okay. Long as you have an exit.
Thank you.
It is one year.
This is for SmartCom, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a one year?
Five renewals, four renewals.
Four, one year.
Four, four renewals.
I thought it was.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Ten M, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to award the service contract for direct internet access services to Foremost Telecommunications Corporation at the International Bridge. Same thing, we need ISP internet service providers to provide our internet. Staffs recommend approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Sure. Ten N, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to amend the contract with Millennium Engineering Group in the amount of fifty seven thousand five hundred thirty seven dollars and eighty eight cents for additional construction material testing services for the FAR slash PSJ Aquatic Facility. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, it was more work since there was a lot of fill, the, the ground was a little low to bring it up to, to par, so that incurred more testing costs to make sure everything's built correctly.
Vote for approval. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Ten O, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to award contract for single machine repaving project year six. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, there are a couple of streets that we want to pick up before they go bad. There were streets that were good when we started year one, that are getting deteriorated. One of the streets we want to get done pretty fast is West Sioux Road that leads to the Aquatic Center. We want to get that one repaved. They're looking pretty.
Vote move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Ten P, consideration action on request from, for contract time extension and associate supplemental fees for project manager for the Far Aquatic Center. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, if you recall, a couple of meetings ago, I brought you a time extension contract for the Aquatic Center to take it from July to December. The construction manager working that project hasn't been paid because his contract stopped in July. So he's been working for free all his time, so we want to get him caught up at the same rate he was, we're being paid before.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Ten Q, consideration action, if any, a request for contract time extension, associate supplemental fees for project manager for FY fifteen, DAP northbound expansion and second BSIF exit project. Same scenario here, the contract for construction management stopped, I believe, in, whatever, December, I believe it's July for this contract, and he's been working for free since then.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Ten R, consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with RL Abatement Inc. out of Westwood, Texas, for demolition of a city-owned building and related amenities located at fifteen oh one North Cage Boulevard through the international purchasing system, TIPS, cooperative contract two ten two zero five. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, one correction, this is not city-owned building. This is EDC-owned building. We're doing this on behalf of EDC. This is the old Holiday Village property off the expressway in two eighty one and I two. We bought, we want to take all that, the old buildings, take away all the concrete and razz it, get it to natural ground so we can market it better.
Okay.
Vote for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
That's all I have.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. It's five thirty nine.